Everybody, I'm going to reconvene the Parker Town Council meeting at 7:15 PM. Council, please sign in. All council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Debbie Lewis. Do we have anyone in the audience under fifteen? Under eighteen? Nothing? Holy cow, no kids? Alright, well then we're gonna do it the old-fashioned way. If you would, please stand and join me in honoring our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright. Michelle, do we have any special presentations tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. I do know I got a text from Dennis Houston, the CEO of The Chamber, and he's not gonna be here tonight because his son is going off to college tomorrow for his freshman year, so I, we can all completely understand why he's not here tonight. So with that, we'll move right into public comment. So this is an opportunity to give public comment to the town on items that are not currently on our agenda. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, there will be a public comment opportunity at that time. So this is just for general public comment. There's a three-minute time limit. No action will be taken on these items. So if you're here for general public comment, you're gonna see there's a clock above me here that says three on it. There's one in the back of the room, too. I've got the control for it. And so if you do come up for public comment, whether it's now or later on in the meeting, and that gets to zero, I'm gonna go ahead and say thank you very much and stop you. So I'm not being rude, I'm just letting you know the rules ahead of time. So, public comment, come one, come all. This is your time for general public comment. Anyone for public comment? Going one? Going twice? Okay, we're gonna close public comment at 7:17 PM. We're moved to move on to items. I think we're gonna do a truncated version of reports from mayor and council since we started so late. Council, is there anything anyone has that's urgent and needs to be put out there right now?
Mayor and council, I just want to add that, you know, normally we get a lot of comments on our Facebook pages from citizens. Some are fun, some are challenging. But one of my fun ones today was from Mr. Dwayne Heitman, who commented on the solar eclipse cake I took into work, requesting a slice. So, Dwayne, come on up. Now you've got an extra fork for Tony, so you have to share.
Alright, now you did this once, now everyone's gonna want cake.
I'm sorry, but no one else said anything.
We'll have to be quick on that draw.
Yeah, I know. Next, solar eclipse. Everyone watching on Facebook, next solar eclipse, Amy's gonna bake you a cake.
And you didn't think I was gonna do it, did ya?
Is there disclosure form?
Happy to see you here.
Disclosure form, yeah, you need, your taxes just went up, sorry. Alright, next item on our agenda is consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine. Will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have something removed for further discussion. For those watching at home and for those in the audience, you'll see some items on our consent agenda marked as first reading. For, in order for this body to be able to discuss any item coming before it, it has to be in the public domain. They're not allowed to talk about stuff that is not available to the public. They can't discuss something if it hasn't been brought into the public domain. First reading brings it into the public domain. So that's why we don't have separate hearings for first readings. The consent agenda brings it into public domain, they can discuss it and debate it then after that, and then there's the second hearing on it. So that's why they're listed that way. So with that, council, I entertain further discussion or a motion on consent agenda items 6A through 6L. So moved. We have a motion from Josh Rivero and a second from Josh Martin. Council, please vote. Council, please vote.
Oh, there we go. That don't work.
Alright, let's go for three times. Who we missing? Council, please vote. Modern technology for you here, people. Alright, we're gonna do it this way. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is our town administrator's report. Michelle?
I really don't have anything other than our new electronic agenda packet.
Ah, wait!
We'll have a voting system, electronic voting system.
Oh, sweet chicken.
Rid of these?
Yes.
These will be turned into necklaces and you guys get to wear them around.
And you will see it on your monitors and we'll see it up on the big screen.
Alright.
Couple months out, but we got that coming.
Alright, cool beans. Alright, next item up is item number eight. This is ordinance number 3.01.114 on second reading. This has been continued from July 3rd and from July 17th. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 13.12 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning wireless communication facilities. Jim Maloney, rock the house.
Good evening, mayor and council. Ken Feldman is going to assist me in tonight's presentation of ordinance number 3.01.114. I hired Ken as special counsel to assist the town in at least getting a proposed ordinance in front of you, and this deals with the siting of small cell facilities in the town, including the town's rights of way. Please note that both Verizon and Mobility had the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed amendments to Chapter 13.12 of the code, which is in your packet this evening. Ken is a partner in a Denver law firm of Kinsinger and Feldman. Ken's practice emphasizes local government representation, particularly telecommunications, utilities, general local government law. Ken has represented local governments, nonprofit organizations, and governmental associations nationwide in connection with cable television franchising, deployment of community broadband networks, tower and antenna siting, rights-of-way management, public safety, communications issues, communication service contracts, and gas and electric franchising. Ken also works with local governments in connection with telecommunications and utility-related litigation and administrative proceedings before the Federal Communications Commission and the Public Utilities Commission. You may recall that Ken assisted the town. We went through the use-by-special review application with Excel a couple of years ago. Ken is going to address the big picture of state and federal regulations as they pertain to small cells and, of course, the amendments that are before you this evening for consideration. And then Ken and I are going to address the specifics of the ordinance. I guess stated another way, if there's anything that Ken doesn't hit, which will be unlikely, then I'll get back up and try to identify those as well.
No pressure there, Ken, at all, right?
So, Ken, you want to come up and present?
Present. Thank you, Jim, and good evening again, mayor, council members. It's nice to be here. So I want to talk first about the background, a little bit of the background of the federal law and how we got here. And I know we talked very briefly about this when we were talking about the legal issues in executive session, but I think staff would like the public to hear this as well, so please bear with me. You'll be experts by the time we're all done. The 1996 Telecommunications Act, which, by the way, was the first significant update to the 1934 Communications Act, addressed a number of telecommunications issues on the federal level, one of which was the siting of wireless facilities. If you remember correctly, after 1996, that's when we had all these new cellphone companies, and there was a sphere of thousands and thousands of towers that were gonna be going up all over the country. And for the most part, the federal law in 1996 preserved local zoning authority over towers and related facilities. They, there were a couple of areas where local governments were preempted. Local governments are not permitted to make decisions based upon the health effects of radio frequency emissions or radio frequency interference. Any denial of a request must be in writing based upon evidence in a written record. Your regulations cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting wireless services in the community, and they must be applied in a competitively neutral and non-discriminatory manner to all entities. There's a provision in that 1996 act that says decisions must be made in a reasonable period of time, but Congress did not tell us what they meant by that. So when those kinds of ambiguities occur in statutes dealing with telecom, the Federal Communications Commission steps in, and they have a rulemaking proceeding that results in a decision where they tell us what they think Congress meant. And the FCC has adopted over the years two shot clocks. We refer to shot clocks kind of generically as the time in which local governments must act on different kinds of applications. The first shot clock said that for applications for any new facilities, you must act within 150 days. For any colocations, you must act within 90 days. Failure to act within those dates from a complete application would be considered an unreasonable delay. So the remedy for an applicant would be to go to court and say, "The town is presumed to have, to be unreasonable because the shot clock has passed." And then the court decide, well, would, in most cases, have told jurisdictions, "You will act in the next 10 days." In 2012, Congress passed a new statute called the Middle Class Tax Relief Act. You might be wondering what this has to do with wireless facilities, and the answer is, by title, nothing. But more than half of that act had nothing to do with tax relief. It had to do with spectrum and public safety communications. And there's a very short paragraph in this act, which has also become known as the Spectrum Act, that says, "When there are colocation applications and the applicant proposes something that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of the site, the local government may not deny and shall approve the site." So a congressional directive making your zoning decisions for you when there's no substantial change. Congress did not tell us what a substantial change in the physical dimensions was. So in steps the FCC again, and after a long public process, they came out with rules in 2014, late in the year, that defined a whole bunch of key terms relating to what's a substantial change and what's an eligible facility's request. So we now have a new shot clock. For certain kinds of colocations that fit under this statute, you have to make a decision within 60 days of a completed application. And for those kinds of colocations, but not all kinds, only the kind that fit under the statute, a failure to act results in the application being deemed granted. So, little bit more restrictive. Now, none of those prior statutes were dealing with what we today call small cells, in particular small cells in the rights-of-way. The rights-of-way generally, when we talked about communications facilities, was wires, either on poles or underground. It's only been recently that the technology has developed to allow antennas and other wireless network facilities on lower heights, so not the traditional 100-foot cell towers, and have the capability to be placed in rights-of-way. We have a state law from 1996 that preempts local franchising authority for any facilities in the rights-of-way, communications facilities in the rights-of-way that is not cable television-related. So if you're a wireless company and you have these small cells and you want to put them someplace and they can go 30 feet high, it makes sense to put them in the rights-of-way because under state law, we're not allowed to charge, we, meaning local governments, are not allowed to charge for the use of the rights-of-way, whereas if they went a half a block back and attached them to the facade of a building, they would be paying rent for that building space. Keep in mind also that when we talk about small cells, and this is something the public should understand, this doesn't mean small in physical size necessarily. It refers to the coverage area. And I'm not a technical expert, but I hang out with them from time to time, and these facilities and these networks can range anywhere from 200 feet to 1,200 feet. Over time, that technology is going to, I think, continue to improve, so it may, the coverage areas may be expanded. But they can be small physically. Generally, a site requires at a minimum an antenna, two radios, a power source, and the wires that connect the antenna down to the other equipment. Sometimes you see those radios and antennas attached to the outside of a pole. Sometimes, if it's a nicely designed camouflage site, everything will be on the inside of the pole. Verizon has some really cool-looking poles in downtown Denver near Union Station that are about 30 feet tall, that are kind of narrow at the top. The antenna's on the inside. You can't tell there's an antenna there, all the wires are on the inside, and it gets broad at the base, and all of the equipment is inside the base, and you'd never notice other than that it's a pole out there. So, they can be small, but they can be big and ugly, too, and I can show you some pictures if you want to see them. So, and some of these small cell companies, and Mobility is represented here tonight if you have questions regarding Mobility specifically. Charmaine Dragala is here, and she's sitting right back here. We thought Verizon was gonna be here as well, but I'm not sure that they've come in. But I know Mobility, based on their network, some of their sites are the lower-to-the-ground sites. Some of them are 80, 90, 120 feet tall, and initially, they preferred to put them in the rights-of-way. As you might imagine, this, that wouldn't be a Parker-specific issue. There are not many communities that would feel real good about 120-foot poles going up along the streets where kids are walking to school and other things are happening. Add to this process, new state legislation. There's been a push by the industry all over the country for what they call small cell legislation, and another way to ask state government to restrict local authority to make it easier for these companies to cite small cells. About half the country either has this legislation now or has legislation pending. Hours passed last spring. It, it's not that bad. It's actually workable, and that's a combination of having a couple of legislative sponsors who respect local government and local control. The lead negotiators in Colorado were from Verizon, and they were, I wouldn't say easy to work with, but were respectful of local concerns. If you talk to, well, I've talked to my colleagues around the country, different states have different, AT&amp;T takes the lead in one state, and T-Mobile took the lead in another state, and we had Verizon taking the lead here. And we worked with that, we, meaning Colorado municipality, Colorado counties, and the Colorado Communication and Utility Alliance, which Parker is a member of, worked very well. We came up with some compromises, and while it never feels good to have the state tell us what to do when it comes to managing local property, we at least got a bill that we could work with. This bill basically says that small cells, and I mentioned the size, they're defined as this equipment which could fit within an imaginary structure of 17 cubic feet. And just kind of to expand on what I've talked about, the comment that I made earlier, I was at a continuing legal education seminar, and one of my colleagues from Los Angeles who does this kind of work for cities, and he's about six foot three and 300 pounds, and he went to Home Depot and bought a bunch of pipe and made this like enclosure that was 17 cubic feet, and stood inside of it and said, "No one's ever called me small before," but the FCC apparently now has defined me as small. So, we have a bill that says, a law that went into effect July 1st that says, "Small cell facilities are used as by right in any zoning district, but subject to those zoning regulations." So if we have a 35-foot height limit in a residential zoning district, and somebody wants to put up a 50-foot facility or take a 35-foot light pole and add 20 feet to it and put up an antenna, they can't do that without going through whatever your other processes are, variances or whatever. It's not a use by right where they just come in and get a building permit to build whatever they want. The law allows for a right to attach to any municipally-owned pole, so if they want to attach to a traffic signal pole, we obviously have public works concerns about the criteria under which other attachments will be made to those poles. We are allowed to impose them. Most of the companies that I've talked to are going to try not to put up new poles if they can get away with it because it costs more money. They're gonna try to attach to existing infrastructure. So if there are city-owned poles, if there are electric company-owned poles, that's what those entities are going to do. Actually, you're, you have an advantage in Parker compared to many in the metro area that are served by XL Energy, because for months, IRAA has said, "We'll, we'll work out attachment agreements with these guys." XL would not. It took them about 10 months to change their policy, where now they've just said, "We're gonna do this." But I suspect it'll take another 10 months for it to figure out how to implement it. So, we at least have a more reasonable opportunity here to get some of these facilities cited on existing infrastructure that is not owned by the town. There's a 90-day shot clock under the new law to act on applications. It would have been 150 days had the state law not changed. Batch applications are permitted now, so if someone has multiple applications within the town, they can make one, or multiple sites, rather, they can do it in one place or one application. I mentioned that our state law is not as bad as some of the others, and I will tell you, there are lawsuits in other states where municipalities have sued the state as a result of those laws, so we'll see how those come out. But what we have done here, the town was approached by Mobility and then by Verizon about siting small cells. We talked about entering into a license agreement that would be a master license agreement that would cover the conditions under which generally access to the rights-of-way would be allowed. This is the kind of insurance you have to have. This is the permitting process. These are the things that will happen in every single case. And then supplemental site licenses to address the specific terms and conditions of each individual site. So again, if one zoning district is all residential and another is commercial or industrial, we have different criteria that we would impose for those individual site licenses. We're in the process still of negotiating with, with those companies on those processes, but we wanted to get the code cleaned up first. And essentially, what the changes to the code are, and rather than go through each of them point by point, which I'm sure would bore most people to death, and I know you have other stuff on your agenda tonight, I would just tell you that we have worked with, Mobility actually looked at the draft and said, after first reading, and said, "We can live with this. This looks pretty good to us." Verizon had a number of changes that they wanted to make, and the best way for me to summarize their changes, they wanted to make sure that small cells were identified in the code as, as different, and recognizing that the process in some cases is going to be different for small cells because of the, the use by right and the need for administrative approval if they meet zoning district requirements. They went a little bit too far, in staff's opinion, in that they tried to have like a separate section on small cells right after the section on other kinds of wireless facilities, even when there were no differences, and it just would have completely expanded the code and created more, from staff's perspective, a lot more confusion. But we eventually worked out some compromises, particularly with the chart that's in the, in the code that talks about the different zoning districts and when something is used by right and when it is subject to administrative approval versus when it goes to public hearing. And once those changes were made, let me just make sure there's nobody from Verizon here. Okay? I, I don't think they would disagree with me. While it wasn't exactly the way that they would have written the code, they felt comfortable that we had addressed their concerns. Jim, would you agree with that? And, and basically, what you have before you, I know you had a chance to read it before you approved it on first reading, is a modification of that first document that just cleans up some of that language, makes a more specific reference to when there's administrative approval for small cells, and, and that's kind of the best summary that I can give you. I guess I, I'm not gonna get into more detail unless you have specific questions. The other thing that I would mention, just so that everyone knows it, and again, I mentioned this in the executive session, the Federal Communications Commission has two proceedings open right now dealing with facilities in the rights-of-way, one related to wireline facilities, one related to wireless. And that, those proceedings may result in further federal preemption over local control. So when you are looking at your list of what you usually talk to your congressional delegation about, you might ask them to send a nice note to the chairman of the FCC and remind him that the town of Parker does a pretty good job of managing how these companies are getting into the rights-of-way, and we don't need the federal government telling us how to do it. And, and I would just point out to you on that point, because I do think the FCC is gonna come up with new rules, and we may be back before you in a year asking to amend the code again. The folks that we have worked with, with the industry, have worked very well with us. We don't agree with them all the time, but it's been a respectful discussion. We understand their concerns better now than we did before we started these conversations. They understand the town's concerns better than before we started these conversations. Each of these companies, every one that I've mentioned tonight, has their local people that we, meaning staff, work very well with, but they also have their lobbyists and they have their big-time lawyers in Washington, DC. And those people are in front of the FCC every week, telling them how bad we, the collective local government community, is at getting these things cited, and how terrible it's gonna be for broadband in the United States if they don't pass these federal preemptory rules to stop local governments. So I know that none of the people that we work with have the authority to change that higher up at their company, but periodically, you as elected officials get contacted by these companies. And I would encourage you to remind them that we get things done when we work with your people on the local level, and it's, well, it's not for me to suggest policy, but you might consider whether you want to let them know whether you think it's appropriate for these same companies to be advocating in Washington that local government should be taken out of the picture when it comes to how we cite these facilities in our communities. So with that, I will stop my presentation and see what kind of questions you may have.
Okay, question, I know, I'm sure Rivero has questions because he loves when other governments tell us what to do.
I only have one, and he probably has seven.
Yeah, go ahead, Martin.
So, my only question, Ken, and thank you again for going through that. Are these companies able to share the same equipment, or does Verizon has their piece and then Mobility has their piece and then AT&amp;T has their piece? So you could have, for example, your IRAA pole with three different antennas from three different companies up there?
In the vast majority of cases, they do not share the equipment stores. You may have a cell tower with three antenna arrays, and one is for each company. When I have asked the engineers, "Can we co-locate more than one company on these lower facilities, a streetlight pole?" What I'm told is, one, it depends upon what part of the radio frequency spectrum they're using, because some companies are closer with their licenses, and that creates more interference, and some have completely different parts of the spectrum, and it might more easily facilitate a co-location. But basically, the answer is, you're usually not gonna get more than one company on a 30-foot pole or 25-foot pole. In very rare occasions, you might be able to get two.
So first in, wins.
Right.
Amy, do you have any questions?
Not at this moment.
Josh?
So, you, Mr. Feldman, thank you very much. You stated Verizon wanted it different. Different than what? What was their definition? What did, what did they want to find differently?
Oh, you know, I'm not sure the substance was that much different. They, they wanted, for example, I don't have their red line that they proposed to us, but they, we would set out a process or, you know, define a wireless communications facility. And then they would want a separate definition that was called small cell wireless communication. Well, it was, a small cell is part of the definition of wireless communication. We'd set forth the process for the application, and then they want a small cell wireless application. Set forth the process.
So you're talking, in, in general, they just wanted something different than what we were preparing.
Right, and, and their feeling was, is that the person behind the counter might not recognize that small cells are to be treated differently than other kinds of applications for broadband equipment. And I think they were well-meaning. It's, you know, we, we had to push back a little bit and say, "The people who work behind the counter here are gonna be very well-educated in these issues, and when they get an application for small cells, they will know what to do with it, and if they're not sure, they will know who to ask." So it was really a matter of Verizon proposing all this additional language that to us seemed incredibly redundant for the reasons that they stated, was to make it clearer, and we thought it would actually make it more confusing. The analogy that I use for them, it would be if you had a definition of ball, and ball said, "Football, baseball, volleyball, soccer ball, lacrosse ball, beach ball," and, you know, the laundry list, and then, and then below that, it had a definition of football. Wait a minute, right? Or, or they would say, "A ball," in their, in the code language, they would change it and say, "A ball, including a football." Well, wait a minute, football's included in the definition here. You don't need to keep saying, "Including a small cell facility." It's just, we get it. We know how this is supposed to work. Jim, did I kind of cover that right from your perspective?
In fact, you used that analogy in our negotiations.
And for everyone watching at home, we are not gonna regulate balls. Just want everyone to know. So no Facebook posts about footballs over basketballs or anything, so.
So, sorry. So with that, with Verizon's, and this segues off of Mr. Martin's question, with Verizon's involvement, and it being first come, first served, because they can't involvement, and it being first come, first served, because they can't collate because of their different band frequencies, are they put, have we put them at a distinct advantage over, say, Mobilite or come-to-the-table-late AT&amp;T with, with the, all the work that they have done? Are they receiving advantage because they're here first?
I, I don't think they have, I'm extremely confident that no one could claim it. They're, they came here, actually, I think Mobility might have come first. Verizon was pretty close. These companies make their decisions about where they want to deploy and when they want to deploy, and the federal rules that require us to be competitively neutral and non-discriminatory in how we apply our codes does not mean that we can't say no. And again, one of the things that we have in the code is this, if you're going to put a standalone, standalone pole up, there has to be a 600-foot separation from another standalone pole, unless federal law would mandate it, which would be a very unusual circumstance to be closer. So if one company comes in and says, "I need a pole on this block," and we say, "Hey, Verizon's on this block." You can go on this block right next to it, or this one, or this one, or this one, but this one's taken. That company might get first dibs on another block, and then Verizon comes in after, and we say, "Sorry, you can go on one of these adjacent blocks." So we are adopting regulations that will treat everyone the same way, and the fact that one company decided that we want to deploy in Parker now, and another company may decide they don't want to deploy for six months, or eight months, or a year, does not create any kind of a competitive disadvantage. That's their own business decision.
Other questions?
I think that, that the, the distance, I, I have questions about the distance, about the, the 600-feet limit, and, and for that reason that you just stated, you know, now we're deciding whether or not, if Verizon's already got this street, then you can't be anywhere near this street, so we have coverage for Verizon on this street, and we have coverage for AT&amp;T on this street. The big picture is no one else is going to come in, and now we've deemed ourselves a Verizon town, because they got here first. I'm looking for the competition, I'm looking for the ability for the companies to compete for the betterment of our citizens. So by putting that strict limit on how close the poles can be, has, has always been, I think, my concern. Is this a standard procedure? Is this?
It, it, a lot of cities are doing it this way, not just in Colorado, but all over the country. Here's the way I think it would play out. Keep in mind, these separation distances are just for standalone poles, so it doesn't mean that if somebody has a standalone pole on this block, you, you can't have one, and you can't be on the block, because there might be a light pole on the block that you can be on. There might be other, other options. The federal law requires that these, as I mentioned, the regulations can't have the effect of prohibiting the ability to provide service. So if they were to come in and say, "Look, I know you've got a 600-foot separation distance, we got to be 400 feet from that pole, or our network's not going to work, and here's a propagation study from our radio frequency engineer," we would go out and hire a radio frequency engineer to look at their stuff, and if it made sense, we'd come back to you and say, "We need to vary from our..."
That's what I was looking for you to state, because you made it very, you said, "Once in a long while will they come in and do this," but if truly, if there is a distinct advantage to a company, that they can come in and say that we, we have to shorten our distance.
Right. The other, the entire metro area is a market that at least the major companies all want to get to.
Absolutely.
And I don't think any of them would say, "Well, then, I won't go to Parker." I think they would come back and say, "Look, you need to make us a site that's a little bit closer than your separation distance, because it won't work otherwise, here's why."
Okay.
And then we would work it out with them.
But it doesn't matter, because we're going to rewrite this in a year anyway, right? No, sir, just kidding.
Hopefully, we're going to tweak it.
Do you ever feel like a puppet of the state?
Renee? Do you have questions? John?
Thank you.
None.
All right. Thank you very much. Jim, did you have anything else to add before we go to public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. With that, then, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:49 PM. If there's anyone here in the audience wishing to address counsel on this specific agenda item, this is the time. Marty, are you coming down for public comment? Are you, nope, you're going, okay. All right. Seeing none, we're going to close public comment at 7:49 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.01.114 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Oh, we still no joy?
Quiet.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item number nine. We're going to start with 9A. Jim, can we, can I read through 9A subsections one through four, or do we have to do these all individually?
You can do it together.
Okay. All right. I can't do it in one breath, though, so bear with me, everybody. 9A is Tracks A and C Cottonwood Subdivision Filing Number 11, Property Annexation and Rezoning. First item is Resolution 17-046. This is a resolution to set forth town council's findings of fact and conclusions as to the eligibility of Tracks A and C Cottonwood Subdivision Filing Number 11 Boulevard Property for Annexation into the Town of Parker. And item number two is Ordinance Number 2.252 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory known as Tracks A and C Cottonwood Subdivision Filing Number 11, property located in Douglas County. Item number three is Ordinance Number 3.213.6 on second reading, which is a bill for an ordinance amending ordinances, numbers, numbers 3.213, series of 2003, 3.213.1, series of 2006, 3.213.2, series of 2011, 3.213.3, series of 2011, 3.213.4, series of 2014, and 3.213.5, series of 2015, by the addition of certain property to the planned development zoned area known as the Cottonwood Highlands Planned Development Property, and amending the Cottonwood Highlands Planned Development and amet, Development, and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And number four, which is the Third Amendment to the amended and restated annexation agreement Cottonwood Highlands. Whew, that was a long one. How many times did I say the word "dot"? Probably too many times. Stacy, you're going to lead us on this one.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So as you just stated very elegantly, this is Tracks A and C Cottonwood Subdivision Filing Number 11, this is the annexation and rezoning. So this is a request to annex approximately 5.56 acres of property into the town, and then zone it a part of the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development. This property will be brought in as open space. It's highlighted there on your map. So the property is located west of Jordan Road and north of the Cottonwood Highlands Development. The property is an existing stormwater detention pond. The stormwater detention pond was initially constructed in Douglas County. As development started within the Cottonwood Highlands property, improvements were required to be constructed to this pond to accept stormwater from the Cottonwood Highlands Development. The Cottonwood Highlands Metropolitan District acquired the pond and will be responsible for maintenance and operation of the facility. The proposed rezoning will make the pond a part of the Cottonwood Highlands PD, and will not change existing planning areas or residential densities that are currently allowed. The benefits for annexing this property is that it brings it into the town, so the town can have oversight and require maintenance enforcement of the property. So the property, the annexation and zoning conforms with all of our criteria, and therefore, staff recommends that town council approve Resolution 17-046, Ordinance Number 2.251, Ordinance Number 3.213.6, and the Third Amendment to the amended and restated Cottonwood Highlands Annexation Agreement. This concludes the staff report. I'm available for any questions you may have. In addition, Representative for the applicant, Rick Hope, is here to answer any questions that you may have, and that is it.
Your presentation was shorter than my script, reading all the descriptions of it. So, Rick, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Sorry.
If you just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Good evening. My name's Rick Hope. I'm with Site Dynamics. I'm representing Larnar, Colorado, and Cottonwood Highlands Metro District. Address 15545, Carib Circle, Parker, Colorado. I, I really don't have anything to add. Again, I just, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer if I can.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Rick. Counsel, do you have any questions for Rick or for Stacy?
My, my only question is, this piece doesn't count towards any open space requirement or anything regarding Cottonwood Highlands in any way?
No. So the property, when it was annexed into the town originally, had to meet all of the open space and parks requirements, so this additional open space wouldn't count towards any of that.
Thank you.
John, did you have a question? No?
Just real quick, we're making improvements at, and can you just speak a little bit about what it is you're going to be doing, too?
Well, the pond is constructed, I think, I'm not completely sure, and I apologize for that, but there were some improvements to the drop structures on the south portion of the pond to handle, I believe, more capacity, and that's my understanding. Again, forgive me if I'm wrong, but it was something to do with the drop structures.
The footprint of the pond is not going to change.
I don't believe the footprint of the pond changed at all. It was just, it was just the, the flow line in the drop structures and, and shoring up the, the flow.
Okay. No, that's all I got. I'm good.
Okay. Other questions? No? Mr. Hope, thank you very much. We'll open it up for public comment at 7:55 PM. If there's anyone here to address counsel on the side. Seeing no movement, we'll close public comment at 7:55 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or motions on four different items.
Do we have to do these individually?
That is correct. And if I could point out for the second recommended motion, it says, "I move to approve ordinance number 2.251." That should be 0.252, not 1.
Correct. We have 2.252 in our books.
Oh, do you?
Not in the, okay. Ooh, mine says...
For that approval, we have 1.
Oh, I got you, because mine has 2, so.
I move to approve ordinance numbers, I'm sorry, Resolution Number 17-046.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
I move to approve ordinance number 2.252 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Renee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
I move to approve ordinance number 3.213.6 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh Rivera, second by Josh Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
I move to approve, based upon staff findings, the Third Amendment to the amended and restated annexation agreement Cottonwood Highlands.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item 9B. This is Stro Ranch, Stro Ranch filing Number 18B, Fourth Amendment Sketch and Preliminary Plan. Ryan, you're going to be our lead on this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and good evening, Counsel. This is the Stro Ranch filing Number 18B, Fourth Amendment Sketch and Preliminary Plan. The applicant's Bill Maher from Norris Design and Brock Chapman from Rain Tree Investment Corporation are present this evening, and they have a brief presentation following my presentation. Stro Ranch filing 18B is shown here in yellow and is located west of Matsumbaka Road and east and west of the existing Kaiser and French Creek avenues. The total area of Stro Ranch filing Number 18B is 44.39 acres. This filing of Stro Ranch is currently vacant and undeveloped, and consists largely of native grasses and weeds, as shown in these pictures. The intent of the sketch and preliminary plans is to examine the feasibility of our project, including review of conceptual design, ability to tame, to obtain water and sanitation, public improvement requirements, and conformance with the master plan. Sketch and preliminary plans can be processed and heard concurrently. The next step in this process is for the final plat and subdivision agreement to legally subdivide this property, and that will be processed administratively. So for the proposal, the applicant seeks approval of a sketch and preliminary plan to create 100 and single, 175 single-family detached lots, 16 tracks of open space and parkland within the Stro Ranch PD. The Stro Ranch filing Number 18B sketch and preliminary plan are consistent with the Stro Ranch PD Planning Area 6 as to use, residential density, and subdivision design The total density for this area is 3.94 dwelling units per acre. The plan is, I'm going to use my pointer here, is anchored on the east by a 1.7-acre park and 1.15-acre park on the west, and to the west of here will be the new anthology development. This slide depicts some of the criteria that staff looks at when analyzing a sketch and preliminary plan. As for major roadways, the primary vehicular access to the new local residential roads will be from the existing residential collector, Kaiser, French Creek avenues, and the newly construct, constructed Bramwell Drive, which runs west from where Kaiser and French Creek avenues meet. Parker Water and Sanitation will provide water and sanitary sewer service, and provide a will serve letter in your packets, and IREA and XL will also serve the site. Parks, open space, and trails have been provided in accordance with the Stro Ranch PD requirements and land development ordinance. Five-foot detached sidewalks on both sides of the streets will allow for pedestrian movement throughout the subdivision. Several open space buffers are proposed that provide adequate green space between the roads and residential homes, and the two parks that are shown, that I had shown on the previous slides, feature recreational amenities that families in the subdivision will need and use. Stro Ranch filing Number 18B is Zone Stro Ranch Planning Area 6. Detached single-family residents are permitted use in this is zone district, and the density proposed, again, is under the six units per acre maximum density allowed in this planning area. The Stro Ranch PD, when approved, was deemed to be in compliance with the master plan. Therefore, the proposed plans are in compliance with medium-density residential character area of the master plan. Actually, comes in at just under three units per acre. And in conclusion, staff has reviewed the proposal and determined that the project provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Required utilities are available adjacent to the site, and the applicant has agreed to extend these utilities into the site to meet the future demands of the development. On July 7th, or, excuse me, on July 27th, Planning Commission recommended that the town council approve the Stro Ranch filing Number 18B sketch and preliminary plan. The applicant has legal notice the public hearing for this item, consistent with the land development ordinance, and staff is recommending that council approve the Stro Ranch filing Number 18B sketch and preliminary plan. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Before we have the applicant come up, do you guys have any questions for Ryan? Counsel? No?
No.
All right. The applicant would like to come up? Bill and Brock, correct? Did I get that written down right?
That is correct, yeah.
All right. It almost sounds like a beer.
Well, my name is Brock Chapman. I'm, I'm with the owner and developer, 7200 South Alton Way, Suite C400, Centennial, Colorado 80112. We concur fully with the staff report, quite frankly, so I'm sure you've all read every word and every detail of it, and if so, we'll just enter in, that into the record. Additionally, we received unanimous approval at Planning Commission after a very brief hearing. We've received good support with the, the community of Stro Ranch and earlier filings. Nobody spoke at the Planning Commission hearing either, and so rather than just giving you a presentation and repeating the staff report and letting you sit through that again, we, we almost considered not doing a presentation at all tonight, but we did want to give it the respect it deserves, and so what we thought we'd do is, I'd introduce Bill, our, our planner, and he can walk you through the more fun elements of the plan on the design perspective, and then if you all have any questions, be happy to answer them, and maybe get you out of here a little early tonight, so I don't repeat the entire staff report, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Brock. The pressure's on me now to get to it quickly. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Bill Maher. I'm a planner and landscape architect, architect with Norris Design. I'm at 1101 Banning Street, Denver, Colorado 8204. And Ryan, if you could go to slide three, please? And as Ryan did a great job explaining our parks and open space plan, we have about 18% of the site is in some form of active parks, landscape boulevards, or open space. And we worked with the staff, and they provided us very good recommendations on enhancing this through the process. And as Ryan pointed out, could you go to slide four, please? We, the two signature pieces that are this are the, kind of the central park, which we're calling, which is adjacent to French Creek Avenue, and about a two-acre park, and part of the methodology of the parks and open spaces is trying to make sure we're providing something for a wide range of users, from children to the older population. And I think we've done a really good job of providing something for everybody. Within this central park, we'll have a large shade structure with picnic tables and grills, so it'll be very family-focused areas, and some berms and some really interesting landscaping to create places for kids to, to climb and explore a little bit. And then the park on the very, if you could go to the next slide, on the west of the subdivision, so we have these two bookend parks, will have some features in there for, for the younger, younger children, some play structures, a little green area to kind of kick a ball some play structures, a little green area to kind of kick a ball around, and then some walking paths with a lot of vegetation. So we're very excited to bring that forward tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? No?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:04 PM if there's anyone here to address counsel on this item. And seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:05 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
One more question. Sorry. Can you talk to me about long-range planning as far as French Creek being signalized at Matsumbaka, and at what point do we reach a need, and is this development influencing that? And is there improvements tied to this development?
With regards, there is no improvements with regards to a signalized intersection at Matsumbaka, to my knowledge, Councilman Rivera. You know, if there is, that will be caught at the final plat stage for that, but it'll be brought up at then. I don't believe that that was brought up during the sketch and preliminary plan phase.
Other questions? I'll entertain a discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve the Stro Ranch filing Number 18B, Fourth Amendment Sketch and Preliminary Plan, based upon staff findings with the four conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Renee. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item 9C. This is a Tax and Fee Assistance Program Agreement for CNM Ventures LLC. Matt, you're going to lead us tonight.
Indeed. Mayor, Council members, good evening. Tonight, we have before you a Tax and Fee Assistance Program application to assist the expansion of Architectural Concepts LLC. Architectural Concepts is a primary employer located in Parker that is a manufacturer of specialty millwork. They are currently located on Long's Way in the Light Industrial Zone, and they seek to construct an adjacent building that will double their production within the town. CNM Ventures LLC is the real estate development subsidiary of Architectural Concepts. They will develop and own the 40,000-square-foot freestanding structure that will accommodate the expansion in Parker. The facility represents a $5 million capital investment in the town and a significant number of new primary employment jobs. The business projects that employment in the facility will be approximately 70 individuals at move-in and will grow to 110 individuals during the first five years of operation with an average annual salary of $55,000. The TAP agreement in front of you tonight with CNM Ventures will include a rebate of 50% of building permit fees and construction use taxes that shall not exceed $40,000. The project meets the goals of the town's Tax and Fee Assistance Program in that it contributes to the diversity of jobs and employment opportunities within the town. It brings a value-added result to the town with the addition of primary employment, and it assists the growth and expansion of an existing business in Parker. Staff has reviewed the application and the merits of the project and recommends approval of the CNM Ventures LLC TAP agreement as attached, and at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Matt?
They're currently in business?
They are.
And how many employees do they currently have?
They currently have about that same amount of 70 employees.
So, so 70 is where they're now, and they'll grow to 110?
No, they'll actually add another 70, so they'll double in size and then grow beyond that.
Okay.
Other questions? All right. Matt, thank you very much. We'll open it up for public comment at 8:08 PM if there's anyone here to address counsel.
Ateal?
Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:08 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve the Tax and Fee Program Assistance Agreement for CNM Ventures LLC.
Second.
Motion by Amy and a second by Josh Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item number 10. This is Ordinance Number 9.268 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement buy-in between the town of Parker and the county of Douglas concerning terms of use for the Douglas County Truck, Car Wash, and Fueling Station at the Parker Road and Bridge Operations Center. Jim, haven't seen you up here in a while. You get to lead us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward to you. This is the ordinance Number 9.268, and it's requesting approval for an intergovernmental agreement buy-in between the town of Parker and Douglas County for their fuel and wash location at Tammy Lane and Hess Road. This IGA provides several benefits to the town: alternative location for fuel and wash capabilities, ability to fuel large or trailered equipment, continued development of intergovernmental working relationships, cost control through fuel pricing, and emergency preparedness. Town equipment currently is fueled at local gas stations or at the Joint Service Center off of 20 Mile. Both of these are great opportunities for us. However, through this IGA, it allows us for an alternative location to add to that. That's a benefit for town equipment for several reasons. Multiple options for obtaining fuel in an emergency situation, if we were to have power outage or any of the natural disasters that occur, having different areas that we can get fuel from to continue our operations is essential. For larger equipment, the use of local gas stations can be difficult. Getting trailered equipment in and out of the local stations causes many problems. This location is next door to our Public Works Operations Center, and as a result, our Parks and Forestry staff, along with our Public Works staff, who use the larger piece of equipment and trailered equipment, will have a much better and easier efficient way to gain fuel for their equipment. In addition, this IGA provides access to their fuel or their wash facility. That wash facility provides the ability for not only small vehicles, but their large vehicle washes. Currently, town equipment uses Ritchie Brothers or other local privately-owned car washes, or we have a wand wash at our Public Work Operations Center. The costs associated with both of these are very reasonable. They're comparative to what we see at the joint service facility, as well as cheaper than what we would typically see at a gas station. Cost for fuel is right now at $1.72 per gallon at this location, so it's very good. It avoids all the taxes that you would pay at a private center.
Housers. I got to take my Jeep down. Just kidding. Just kidding on Facebook. Everyone on Facebook is like, "What?" No, just kidding.
The cost for washes, they've identified a per-wash cost of $5 for small vehicles and $10 for the large vehicles. Based on the information that we've worked with the county on and the agreement that is in front of you, it is my recommendation to approve this IGA. I'd be happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Thanks, Jim. Counsel, questions for Jim?
The only question is the price per gallon is, there's no markup.
That is correct. The IGA identifies a no markup, so we are paying actually the same price that the county is paying. That's slightly different than what we currently have with Douglas County schools.
A taxing agency making money on a taxing agency.
Correct.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate it. We'll open it up for public comment at 8:13 PM. It's the last chance, last item on the agenda. Public comment? Not seeing any movement. All right, we're going to close public comment at 8:13 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance Number 9.268 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, I will need a motion to continue item Number 11, which is Ordinance Number 3.147.6 on second reading, to a date uncertain.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Renee and a second from John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nate?
Nate?
Okay, we got one. One opposition, four yeses. Motion passes four to one. And with that, I will, we will recess at 8:13 PM to go back into exact session to finish one item out.